Okay. Could you please take your seats? I'd like to call the Maricopa City Council regular meeting to order on this Tuesday, June 17th. The person I had called to give the invocation was unable to attend tonight, so if you'd all stand, I'd like to just have a moment of silence here for a moment of silence and reflection, and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Thank you. Would you please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you. That will take us to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilmember Frank?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great. Thank you very much. We don't have any proclamations or acknowledgements or words at this time. We're going to do that under, I believe, the report from the city manager. And that will take us to the report from the mayor. At this time, just wanted to touch base with you on a few different items and events. Had the opportunity to visit with Avondale's mayor, who I've been following closely. She was the president of the National League of Cities and Towns. She recently resigned from being mayor. We worked very closely with her in a variety of different ways, whether it was through MAG or through the Arizona League, or the National League for that matter. She was very influential and very helpful to us. She resigned as mayor because she filled the appointment seat. Mary Rose Wilcox has decided to run for Congress, and so the Maricopa County Supervisor's spot came available. She filled that and is running for that. So I had the opportunity to go out to Avondale City Hall yesterday and meet the council and the new mayor as well, and just were able to pass along our congratulations for her successes. Also had the opportunity to attend a resolution subcommittee meeting today for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. These subcommittee meetings are really important. It's a real honor for Maricopa to be included as their 91 cities and towns. They can get any number of people, and they chose us, and so that's a really good thing. Were able to basically pass along our recommendations for our needs and what is important to us as we move forward towards recommending as a body at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns to be able to lobby the Arizona State Legislature on our behalf. And so it's really good to have a seat at that table and to be a participant in that. Also wanted to take the opportunity to appoint Councilmember Brown. I've spoken with him in the past couple of weeks. He is going to be filling the seat of my appointment to the PSPRS Board. Councilwoman Gussi currently fills that seat, and she has asked to step down in her final months, and so Councilman Brown and Councilwoman Gussi will kind of cross over. And Councilman Brown has been shadowing Councilwoman Gussi on this important appointment, so we're very thankful very much. Just wanted to let the council know about that appointment and thank Councilman Brown and also Councilwoman Gussi for her service on that committee. And finally, as you all know, it's not a secret at this point, but just wanted to relay the really, really, really good news, and that is, after a very long 10-year slog and through many, many people and much work and much application, it's official. The 347 Overpass project is now a real project. As of Friday, we were put into the Arizona Department of Transportation's five-year plan. And so with funding being there, funding coming from us, coming from our regional partners, it's an exciting time. And it doesn't mean it gets built tomorrow, and people always ask me, "Well, how excited are you?" And I always tell them, "Well, this is kind of like climbing a mountain. You know, we've stood on the top of this mountain, we've summited. It's exciting. It's fun to look down and see what we've accomplished." But you know, the reality sets in real fast. We've still got to climb down this thing. So that's where we're at. But I just wanted to offer a hearty congratulations to the city of Maricopa. We are now going to see an overpass happen. So, thank you. Councilwoman Chapados asked if she could say something about it earlier. I told her no, so I wanted to give her an opportunity just to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I too accompanied Mr. Jepson and Mr. Rose to Wilcox on Friday to attend the meeting. And I tell you, I have sat through a lot of different meetings. The anticipation in that room was palpable. There's a number of people that we need to thank: all former councils, all former mayors, our lobbyist, Mr. Bob Holmes, Paul Jepson, our Development Services staff, city management staff, especially our former mayor and vice chair of the ADAT Board, Kelly Anderson, and Mayor Christian Price. It was a team effort, and I know everybody's here heard that saying, "Don't give up until it's over." Thanks to all these people, we're going up and over, so thank you.
Well, with that, I have no further things to pass along to you, so I'll turn it over to the report from the city manager.
Mayor, I have one item that Economic Development Director Micah Morander will be presenting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm kind of excited to be here before tonight. I didn't think we'd get here this fast, but I'm glad we did. As you know, we launched the Maricopa Advocate Program late last November, and we have some exciting news with some of our advocates. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Economic Development Specialist Denise Earhart to provide an update on where we are with that program, as she's been doing all the heavy lifting. So, Ms. Earhart?
Thank you for the kind intro. Not a lot of heavy lifting, though. Mayor and council, as you know, the Maricopa Advocate Program was designed to ensure participants received a comprehensive understanding of the city's resources and activities, thus providing the proper tools to promote Maricopa as a destination for economic growth. So advocates get quickly involved in the program. They attend a series of city-hosted events and earning points throughout the program. So 15 points will earn you a Silver status, 20 points will earn you a Gold status, and 30 is Platinum. So this evening, I'm very excited to highlight three individuals that have committed to the Maricopa Advocate Program and earned their certified Platinum-level status: Ms. Ellen Buddington, Mr. Brett Roberts, and Ted Yocum. Ellen, please come up. Ellen Buddington is a Lifestyle Director for Totosa Community. She's an extremely active member in the community. You've seen her around in different organizations, different groups, so she's a very popular face. So we're very excited to have Ellen as part of our Maricopa Advocate Team, so please help me congratulate Ellen Buddington. Brett Roberts is another active resident in Maricopa who has been eager and excited to learn about the city's resources and activities. Brett Roberts? And lastly, we have Ted Yocum. He's the VP of Desert Cedars HOA Board, serves on the Zoning Code Rewrite Task Force, chairs the city's Board of Adjustment. I have no idea how lucky we were to find somebody this busy, so please help me congratulate Mr. Ted Yocum. And then I would like to invite Ted Yocum to share a few words of his experience throughout the program.
Take your mic, Ted.
Would you use a mic, please?
You can probably hear me anyway, because I've been told that I have a big mouth. With me, it started with the Leadership, the Citizen Leadership Academy back in 2009. I took the course. I moved here in 2006, moved here with the thought of retiring. I had been retired. I wanted to retire even more, and I enjoyed my first three years here, but I started getting bored. The Leadership Academy led to a bunch of other things. I was appointed a charter member of the Board of Adjustment by Councilman Brown, and I thank you for that. Since then, I've served on various task forces and done what I can for the city. When I saw that the MAP program was being formed, I thought it might be something I wanted to do and got involved. I thought I had no, I thought I knew quite a bit about Maricopa from the Leadership Academy and all of the other activities I was involved in, but boy, was I wrong. And I had a mentor and a teacher, Mayor Price, who, he and I have known one another since we both moved here, because we were both on our HOA boards and we interfaced quite a bit. But learning about budgets, transportation, I have a few other things here which I know have to be mentioned because they're important. The Arizona Commerce Authority, the Angel Investing Program. If anybody would be interested in knowing a little bit more about what it is about, I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting. The Copper Sky. We got involved in all of these things, and I would have probably become involved in them just whether I was in MAP or not. But MAP gave me that extra impetus, I guess, that extra incentive to get involved, and I thanked Denise for her effort. She has been a terrific coordinator. And my final thank you goes to this council, and as Ms. Chapados had said earlier, we owe a lot to all of the people who sat in these seats for the last 10 years, sat on various commissions and committees. Kelly Anderson, for what we have done with the Overpass project. It's just fantastic. Thank you.
I'm so honored to present these three Platinum-level advocates. Each and every one of them is extremely busy with their daily lives, so I applauded them for their dedication to promoting Maricopa as a destination for economic growth. Now, for everyone else in the crowd, we do have additional information on our city website, and you can apply directly to the program. We also have flyers in the back that you can grab on your way out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate it.
Mayor, there's two other people that I wanted to specifically acknowledge for their roles in helping us with the ADAT meeting on Friday, and that's Vice Chair Wei Mantone from the Auction Indian Council and also Pinellas County Supervisor Tony Smith. He made the trip down there. They both made the trip down there, and Tony spoke in support of that, so I wanted to make sure I acknowledged them. Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to say a few closing words on the MAP program and the fact that, yeah, the Advocate Program is just that. It's a wonderful opportunity to help correct the erroneous rumors that you all hear standing in your front driveways every day, and really gets you an opportunity to shed the light on things that perhaps you think or thought you know, as Mr. Yocum said. And when you actually get to talk firsthand to the Development Services Department or the Fire Department, the Police Department, but especially with our Economic Development Department, it really gives you, sheds light on an area in which there's so much work that goes behind the scenes before anything ever comes out of it, and it takes lots and lots of hours. So just like our youth and to our MAP participants, thank you very much to all the volunteers because that's what makes the city go around. So we have room and space in our program. We look forward to additional applications. Please just contact the city if you'd like to participate, but it really is an excellent opportunity to be well-educated in knowledge of what's going on around here. So, thank you very much. Mr. Rose, is there anything else? Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to the Call to the Public. I have one speaker card here, and we'll ask Mr. Leon Potter to come forward first, and then we will turn it over to the audience. You'll each have three minutes. We have a little timer up here to help assist with that. It helps count that down, and we ask you to please be respectful of one another, but you have three minutes to speak to the audience. Mr. Potter?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to take the opportunity to praise, to praise God for the wonderful country that we live in, the opportunity to participate in our government, participate, the opportunity to run for office. You know, our country is not without critics, it is critics, but you know, I don't think there's any other place on earth, and with all that, we work toward a more perfect union, as our founding fathers said, and I think we, all in all, we do our best. And one of the rights that we have is freedom of speech, freedom to petition our government, freedom of religion. And a couple of weeks ago, at the special meeting regarding an appointment to the City Council, it's been mentioned in articles and Facebook that Councilwoman Gussi might have stepped her bounds regarding her freedom of speech, as she put it in her article. So I think that's up to the City Council to go through the process of reviewing via Code of Ethics. And I'm not here to say one way or the other which that is. That's, you know, caused some controversy, but I think maybe in her line of questioning to the important position, she might have felt it was necessary. I don't want to put words in her mouth, but just being someone in the audience, that's just what comes to mind. Also in that lines, I don't think we should start there, though. There's been words, not necessarily spoken, but written to the public publicly, and to individuals. One was a Facebook post a few months ago. This is after the policy of Code of Ethics was put in place by Vice Mayor Farrell. To his credit, he did apologize to the public for his words, and he took it down, but it made national press, and not just because he's at Farrell, because he's our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor of Maricopa. And I think that also deserves to go back and review the process of the Code of Ethics. And prior to that, there was an email written, unsolicited email, from Councilmember Bridger Kimball to a constituent who was participating in the government by way of recall, going through the recall process, looking for, you know, friends to gather support, which I think we have the right to do. Councilman Bridger Kimball sent an unsolicited email, which was documented, and many on his council received that. And I also think that's worthy of review of the Code of Ethics policy, because at the time, we didn't think of it, and I know I didn't, but in comparison, to be fair to all concerned, to Councilwoman Gussi, these other actions also were hurtful and publicly and say something about you as leaders, as City Council members and our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The time is open. Councilman Potter was the only one with a speaker card, but if you'd like to approach the podium, may do so.
I'm sorry to bring, it's been such an uplifting meeting. I hate to touch on content that's otherwise. My name's Kevin Wilkins. I'm a Maricopa resident. I'm a constituent, and recently, I was approached to sign a recall petition regarding Councilmember Bridger Kimball related to a DUI, and I'm not familiar with the case at the time, so I did some research. I got up to speed with public information and asked a coworker the next day what her thoughts were, another resident. She asked if I should lose my job over at DUI, and my immediate response to that is absolutely not, but I considered one important variable. I'm not an elected official, and furthermore, there are many chosen professions where one is at risk of losing their job over at DUI, including teachers, nurses, pilots, et cetera. I concluded that there is a higher standard to be upheld from someone who chooses to run for office, and that it is reasonable to expect them to be law-abiding citizens in good faith. I vote in good faith that I'll be represented by someone capable of good decisions, not only personally, but on my own community's behalf. I wondered what he's done since the incident. I'm a believer in redemption, certainly not in position to judge or throw stones. That being said, I looked for actions post DUI, hoping to see a sobriety date, proactive attendance to groups, organizations, anything that I might recognize as steps in the right direction. But aside from a speech, and at the high school, and to the contrary, I saw a guilty plea to lesser charges while blood tests were pending, appeasement to state-mandated minimums. Most upsetting of all, a highly controversial email filled with denial and deflections. I spoke with the recipient of said email and learned how intimidated she felt, the overall traumatic effects that this unsolicited correspondence from Mr. Kimball was for her. Her husband conveyed that no considerable amends were offered them. In his email, Kimball states, "I was not recklessly driving when I was pulled over," and continues, "You may want to get your facts straight before sending something out that talks about the facts of the case." Well, the facts according to the police report are that he almost struck a concrete center raised median three separate times, made an unsafe lane change, almost struck a minivan, and crossed two lanes of traffic very abruptly, all with a BAC of .285. Fact of the matter is that it was not only reckless, but also incredibly dangerous to him and others. He ran on a platform of integrity, honor, and commitment in reviewing his activities' statements even post DUI. It seems he's fallen short in those three areas. I do support the resignation of Mr. Kimball, of a City Council member, and as a leader in this community, his actions have created a wave of unnecessary focus away from matters that should be, that should take more precedence. I also ask the people of Maricopa to demand more from our leadership. Send a message in the most effective manner by signing the recall petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kimball, would you care to respond?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks for your comments. I've apologized publicly, I think, three times for this now, so I have no comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Councilwoman Gussi?
I come to you today as a candidate for Justice of the Peace. It was brought up to my attention that there have been some candidates that have been putting up posts throughout the city in response to my question of the city staff as to what they were going to do with those posts. Some of them were going to be removed, some of them were removed, and it was brought to my attention that one of the candidates is a Justice of the Peace candidate. One of the things that I noticed is that I didn't get the email that was sent to all the City Council candidates. So it was in response to the post. I received it after I had inquired about it. I was just wondering if the council could make sure that anything that has to do with the city elections, I mean, not city elections, but anybody running for office within this area, receive those emails also. It would be in all fairness of the candidate that's running for Justice of the Peace that put up those posts, he might not have been aware of the rules or the conditions. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. I know we don't typically respond, but I think that's something for legal or a city clerk. Do we have a, do we have an understanding or a guesstimate on how to go about that?
I think right now, we, I think Councilwoman Gussi is correct, we can't deduce between city elections and elections that are in county line, so we can look into it, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Gussi, to see how we can, we don't want to step on Pinellas County's toes because it's their position, but maybe there's a way to make sure the information regards to the city of Maricopa is set out for all candidates to be running for county positions.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Seeing nothing, we'll move on. Thank you very much for your participation this evening. On to Item 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, the minutes from the past meetings. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. At this time, we have a public hearing, Item 8.1, which is PH 14 dash 07. The mayor and city council shall hear public comment regarding a proposed street name change from DR Horton Drive to Homestead Drive within the Homestead North subdivision. I have not received any speaker cards on this, but if you would like to step forward and comment on this and this issue only, you may do so. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing time, and that will take us to the consent agenda. Moving on to Item 9 on the consent agenda, I turn the time over to Vice Mayor Farrell.
Mayor, I'd like to remove Agenda Item 9.6 from the consent, please.
Okay. Moving, removing Item 9.6 from consent, that would be the first item on the regular agenda then, and that leaves the rest of the agenda to stand. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. At this time, that is the slate 9.1 through 9.8 minus 9.6. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. And that takes us to the regular agenda, Item 10. That takes us to 9.6. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself due to a conflict.
Okay. You are recused. Council, any other concerns or questions on this item? Obviously, it was on the consent agenda.
I have to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Any nays for good measure? Just kidding. Motion carries. Perfect. All right. That takes us to Item 10.1. Mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on appointing one citizen to fill the vacancy on the Parks, Recs, and Library Committee. This is for discussion and action. Someone, will somebody be presenting on this one?
Mr. Mayor, that's my nomination.
Okay.
I got applications from four individuals, one withdrew replication due to a pending move out of the city, so I spoke with all three of the candidates that were Mr. Terry Horn, Ms. Amy Bratley, and Mr. Al Brandonberg. All three would be very much appreciated on our boards, committees, and commissions, but at this point in time, I'm going to nominate Mr. Al Brandonberg to be appointed to the Parks, Recs, and Library Committee.
Thank you. Al Brandonberg is the selection of Councilwoman Chapados. This is for the full council to discuss. If you have any other concerns or questions?
I just had a question. Is Mr. Brandonberg here?
He's not. He's out of town on family business.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, if that is the selection of the council member, and I don't see any further discussion, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Mr. Al Brandonberg to fill this position under Councilwoman Chapados. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10.2. Mayor and city council shall hear a presentation regarding the Maricopa Aging in Place Program. This is for discussion only.
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to present the presentation on the Aging in Place Program. As you know, over the past few months, I have talked with many individuals about the various needs that exist within the city, and one of those needs that have been identified is a need to focus on programming specifically for seniors. And if you recall, you and I had an opportunity to meet with the Coperseniors recently, which simply affirmed that need. So this is the initial steps into trying to address that issue. I am proposing that we create a committee that would focus on three areas primarily, or to create a seniors program that would focus on three areas. The first one being transportation assistance for, the second one being information referrals, whether that's information related to legal assistance or healthcare or housing, and the third one being recreation. Again, that's simply, what I'm proposing is that we appoint a seven-member advisory committee, and if accepted, my intention would be to work with Meg and our city attorney in developing a resolution to bring back to you that would effectuate that committee. I wanted to just briefly run through with you some of the areas that we would be focusing on and kind of the events that would occur over the next several months. In June, we would, this is the initial presentation. In July, we would develop an action plan along with Meg, and I will introduce to you here shortly Ms. Amy St. Peter with the MAG. In August, develop the demographic profile and asset inventory for the city. In September, convene the actual advisory council or committee. In October, December, conduct community engagement. In January 2015, we would analyze the results of the engagement. In February, we would do research of best practices and address those priorities identified through the outreach efforts. In March, we vet many of the possible approaches with the advisory committee, and in April-May timeframe, develop a business plan, if that's, excuse me, what we found or what the committee believes is needed. And then actually, June of 2015, launch the program. One of the needs that exists in addition to the resources that MAG will be able to provide, which Ms. St. Peters will discuss here briefly with you, I would recommend hiring a temporary part-time employee that would work with, to assist in structuring and launching the program. And if approved, the agency that I've listed here provides a lot of resources. They try to connect professionals with cities that are, would bode, their experience would bode well for both sides. So this is the agency that I would look to for that part-time temporary person. Did you have any questions regarding this portion of it? If you don't, then I will have Ms. Peters present her portion of the presentation that focuses on the resources that MAG can bring to this effort. Ms. Peters is the Human Services and Special Projects Manager for the Maricopa Association of Government, or as we all know it, MAG.
Ms. Peters?
Thank you. Thank you very much. City Manager Rose, Mayor and City Council, it's an absolute pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for having me down. I think this is a really exciting opportunity. Some of the changes that we're seeing across the country, across the world, are happening right here in Maricopa as well. And I think we have a really wonderful chance to be able to work together to look at what we can do together and how we can better serve the needs of our residents. So, thank you so very much. As you know, MAG provides a number of different areas of support to its member agencies, and we're excited to have Maricopa join as a member agency. So we work in the areas of transportation, environmental quality, human services, population, and interactive mapping. And so whatever we can do to better support you and your work, please do let us know. We are here to serve you at all times. There are many reasons to look at Aging in Place and an age-friendly initiative. One of those is the significant population growth that's occurring right here in Maricopa as well as throughout the world. The Pew Research Center is estimating that every single day, 10,000 people will turn the age of 65. And that's not just a blip on the screen, that's for the next 19 years. So this really is the new normal. Our demographics are changing as a society. It's been said that the gift of the last century was longevity, thanks to medical advances, better health, more physical activity. The challenge of this century will be trying to figure out what to do with those additional years. It used to be that people would retire, play golf, play bingo. There's been some research that was just released indicating that bingo is down by 70%, and that's a problem for some churches and other places of worship that might sponsor that, but I think it's a real opportunity because people are really actively engaged. They're really wanting to be very meaningfully involved, but in doing so, they're really challenging our traditional responses to aging. And so that significant population growth is both an opportunity as well as a challenge if we fail to respond to those changing dynamics. Some of the other catalysts for change include the wonderful support that we've been receiving from our local foundations, such as the Piper Trust, and we're also engaged in two different national initiatives. That's the City Leaders Institute on Aging in Place and the Community Agenda Project that's funded by the Pfizer Foundation and administered by Grant Mercers and Aging. We are still a part of both of those national initiatives, and that really gives us entree to a number of really talented partners across the country. So we're in a unique position to be able to showcase the lessons that we're learning here, as well as to learn from what other people are doing across the country. But perhaps the biggest reason to look at this topic right now is what we're hearing from our residents, from people who are living in our neighborhoods, who are family, our friends. They're saying, "We love our neighbors. We love our neighborhood, so that's the good news." The concern, though, is that they may not see themselves as being able to remain in those neighborhoods without the proper level of support. Things like health, transportation, financial income, all of those things really impact a person being able to choose to remain living in their home independently, perhaps with support from their family, their friends, their neighbors, and from their surrounding community. So approximately 50% of the people that we surveyed in a random sampling scientifically valid survey said, "Yes, we are concerned or very concerned in many cases." They also said what their priorities are, and so things like healthcare, transportation, housing, a lot of concern about being homebound, about being trapped in their homes. So on one hand, people want to stay in their homes where they raise their children in the neighborhoods that they love, but they're also concerned about not being able to access their community from their homes and being very much alone and isolated. And so this is Maricopa. These are the concentrations of people aged 65-plus. You can see, of course, people of this age group and older are present throughout the city of Maricopa, with some deeper concentrations there, right along in the center. We also are looking at the numbers of people who are 65-plus who maybe have lower incomes because they may not have access to some of the forms of support that they might need moving into the future. And the good news is that many people have cars. Across Maricopa County, across the country, people love their vehicles, and they're very much dependent on their vehicles, which works for as long as they can drive. The problem is this. According to our random sampling survey, we're finding that people who are primarily driving right now don't necessarily see themselves primarily driving in the future. They're estimating that from about 89% of people who are primarily driving themselves right now, age 55 and plus, because we want people to project their needs into the future, only about 2/3 still see themselves driving in 10 years. Those rides don't necessarily go away, although some do. Those rides shift. We see that walking will be decreasing as well, but other things like carpooling, taking transit, and dial-a-ride will increase, sometimes significantly. And so if we're looking at carpooling, that's usually getting rides from family and friends. That works out really well if you have family and friends who, one, live nearby you, two, are free when you need them to drive you, and three, actually want to drive you, which those three things may or may not happen for people on a regular, consistent basis. Transit. Transit is not always accessible in all parts of the region, and sometimes even when it is technically, physically available in that neighborhood, it may not be accessible if the sidewalks aren't in good condition. We talk about that last mile, getting actually from your doorstep to the bus stop. It can be very difficult for people, sometimes in different situations, such as summer heat, such as different kinds of trips. For example, if someone might be able to take the bus to their appointment for dialysis, they cannot take the bus on the way home because of their weakened state. And so there's different reasons why people can or cannot use transit. People are projecting that the demand for transit, though, will nearly triple, from 11% to 30% just in the next 10 years. Also, dial-a-ride or paratransit, wonderful form of transportation assistance, it's door-to-door. Unfortunately, it's the most expensive form of transportation assistance that we can provide right now. The average trip ranges from $25 one-way to $35 one-way. That's just one way. So you can see very quickly, given the significant population increases and given the expense of paratransit, that it may not be a sustainable form of transportation, but people are projecting that demand for paratransit will increase by 12 times, going from 1% to 12%. So you can see the quandary. We see the growing need, the growing demand. We also see that there's some gap in our ability to be able to meet those needs. We're also seeing, too, that the traditional responses to aging may not be as relevant moving into the future. Senior centers are wonderful for the people who use them. We're finding from our research and from experience that it's, that the majority of people do not use senior centers. They do not necessarily want to go to senior centers, and this is for various reasons. It's things like hours of operation, sometimes there's a perceived stigma, sometimes it's the programming that's being offered. And so we're finding that there are some seniors who are providing really quality services, and people are benefiting, but in order to be more relevant to a broader population, they may want to consider adapting and evolving and offering different kinds of services, reaching out to a different audience, perhaps. We're also finding a real need to make sure that there are alternatives to those traditional responses. So other programs that are intergenerational, for example, are there opportunities for people and for generations to really connect to each other in meaningful ways. So for all of these reasons and many others, we created the Greater Phoenix Age Friendly Network back in 2012. Since then, we've presented this work on an international basis. We've presented it to conferences internationally, nationally, statewide, and of course, regionally. The goal of the network is to connect all generations to each other into meaningful opportunities to be able to contribute to their communities. And this network has three main functions, the first of which is technical assistance to communities. And so we're working with communities like, all the way from Maricopa up to Wickenburg, everywhere in between. And that technical assistance is primarily in three different functions. One, we provide that demographic baseline of data. We assist with community engagement as a second phase, surveys, focus groups, and interviews. And then third, we help to develop a business plan for some new program intervention, some new form of support, to make sure that it's sustainable and effective. We also maintain a website, which is connect60plus.com. We encourage all of you to go there. The goal of the website is to connect people to each other, to information, and to resources. And we're particularly finding that people are using this website not just here in this region, but really across the country to help their parents who may be living here, their adult children may be back in Chicago, other places across the country. The third function of the network is to provide monthly trainings and an annual conference. And so we have a monthly series of webinars that occurs on the first Friday of each month at noon, and so we just had one this month that focused on reducing stress in the workplace. The previous month, it was healthy eating. Another month, it was lifelong learning. So it's on really different topics because people have very different interests, and we want to be able to reach out to a broad range of people. We also have our annual conference, which was just held earlier this year, with speakers all the way from California to Maine, everywhere in between, really showcasing the best of the best throughout the country, and many of those stories came from right here in this region. These are some screenshots from our website that shows you a little bit about the range of activities that we have available on the website. One in particular that I would like to call your attention to is our Human Services Transportation Provider Inventory. That's a searchable database that's available on the website, as well as on the MAG website, so that people can search according to different criteria, such as area of service, modes of transportation, and eligibility. We're finding that in all of our focus groups, our community engagement, transportation is the single biggest need that older adults face across all parts of the region, all income levels, all of that. And so we want to be able to help people to meet their transportation needs through this website. And so we're growing results, we're able to assist people, we're able to connect those generations through this multidisciplinary team. We have a leadership team that meets every single month, and it combines the best talents from local governments, nonprofits, academia, foundations, to come together to make this work possible. These are the communities that we're engaged in right now on three different levels, consultation, underdevelopment, and implementation. So we have three pilot projects that have launched. That's Northwest Valley Connect, Membership-Based Transportation Program in the Northwest Valley. Central Village is both a village as well as a time bank, so helping neighbors help neighbors with a whole range of services. And Tempe Neighbors Helping Neighbors in the Southeast Valley, which is also a village providing transportation and a whole range of services. We're working with a number of different communities to help people to be able to contribute in meaningful ways to their communities. In terms of those connections, we focus really in three main areas: rides and mobility support, because transportation is the biggest need; information and referral, as City Manager Rose had mentioned earlier. People often don't know where to start when they need assistance, and so having that main source of information and referral can truly be critical, as well as those opportunities to socialize with each other. People can't help each other if they don't know each other. And so a lot of what we're trying to do is to build community capacity. Government has a role. Nonprofits have a role. Community also has an incredibly important role that is often undefined and untapped. And so the network's role, then, is to build capacity throughout the community in a number of different ways. Every single business plan, every single solution is custom-tailored to that community. It depends on what your assets are, what your priorities are. We work with you hand in glove to be able to arrive at the best possible solution. And that is my contact information, as well as our websites. Please feel free to contact me at any time. I really applaud you for your forward thinking in this area, because we're all aging. We may not want to admit it, but we all are, and we all are facing significant population increases. And so for a community like yours to really be at the forefront of that change is really commendable. So thank you so much for your engagement in this area, and please, whatever we can do, please don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any questions for us, Mayor?
Counsel, questions? Thoughts on this? Yes, Councilman Chappados.
Mr. Rose and Ms. St. Peter, thank you so much for your presentation. Being a senior myself, I know we've got a lot of active seniors.
You're a very young senior, though.
Thank you. I'm getting older by the minute. No, I know we have a very large portion of our population that's very actively involved in a number of different initiatives. We've got COPA seniors, Maricopa seniors. There's people in this room tonight that I recognize as being very involved, reaching out to try and provide and expand our resources. So thank you very much. I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
I'd actually like to go back, when you go back to your slides here for a second, it was funny to look at some of those that, Maricopa is an anomaly sometimes in a variety of different ways, all good ways, of course, but definitely different than some other areas in that, you know, I think that we very much value the idea of a senior center here. I think we very much, one of our best ways of transportation for seniors is the dial-a-ride, something that we have here. It's a, you know, on-demand service. It's not perfect, but it's an asset. So I'm actually really happy to hear, you know, what it is to work with the city, look at our assets, you know, really come up with an implementation plan for us that is customized for us, because, you know, we are in the greater Phoenix metro area, but at the same time, we're only 10 years old as a city, and so there's a lot of things that we lack and a lot of things that we need to be visioning for the future on where we want to go and where we want to be. Sometimes, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. And so I think that, and that's a wonderful opportunity for us here to work closely together and, you know, utilize some of those resources that already currently exist and maybe bringing them out here. I think that that's not such a stretch either, and introducing them to the area. So I look forward to that. So thankful for you coming out this evening and appreciate it. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Excellent. On to 10.3. This is an ordinance. The ordinance is, "Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Maricopa, Arizona, levying separate amounts to be raised for primary and secondary property tax levies upon each $100 of the assessed valuation of property, subject to taxation, within the city of Maricopa for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015." This is for discussion and action, and I'll turn it over to you, Brian, but before I do, let's preface this with, you know, the immediate shock that everybody goes through is, "Oh my gosh, we're talking about taxes." And so, but go back and tell us the history of this and where we're coming from and why we're here today and what we're talking about. I mean, this goes way back.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this does go way back. This adoption is for the ordinance for the property taxes, for your primary and secondary property taxes. And you'll see in the slides, kind of a little bit of both, where the primary is more of the operations of the city for public safety, which was voted on back in, I believe, 2006. Then with the secondary property tax, it was voted on in 2008, and that is for the construction of Copper Sky and the Regional Park. And so when we go through, I know there's, with that, the primary property tax is not being raised, as mentioned in previous budget presentations. The secondary property tax, that is to pay for the bond debt service for the construction that was issued for the construction of Copper Sky and the Regional Park. So with that, as going through, I know counsel, last year, with the previous finance director, there was a rate that was set at $1.76 for last year. That was based on estimates before the bonds were issued and before the debt service schedule was formalized, when the bonds were issued. With that, there, now that the debt service schedule is firmed up, we do have a slight increase in the debt service this year, but we'll go back down to what was estimated in the next debt service payments for the rest of the bond payments. So with that, any questions before I start with the presentation?
Yeah, can you, maybe you're going to get to the presentation, but maybe just think about it along the way. Can you explain just generally why the bump here? What is the cause of the bump, this slight increase, and then going back to normalcy, so to speak? I mean, I think most people think about it like they would think about, you know, a mortgage of their house, and so they get on a payment plan, and they pay for it, you know, forever, that same amount. Why this little bump in year one, one and a half?
There was a increase, or I won't say a little balloon payment of the principal payment, to reduce the interest as we went down for the rest of the payment. So this little balloon payment, it was, the principal amount is actually $3 million for the principal. Previously, it was about $750,000. And then the years after that, it'll be reduced, I believe, to about $1.5 million, 1.6, 1.5 from there. So this little bump of increase of principal payment gave us a little bit less interest that we'd have to pay throughout the life of the bond.
Perfect. Thank you.
So with this, the property taxing, the property taxes, as you see on your property tax bill throughout the two times you get it, there are many taxing authorities throughout. There you've got the county, the school district, the state school equalization, community college, special districts, and also the city. So when you look at your property tax, you should see all of these taxing districts, and this is what makes up the property tax bill. With that, I'll briefly go through kind of the levy process. As I mentioned before, there are two property taxes, your primary and secondary, and the primary supports the operations of the city. It was, the levy increases, it's restricted by state statute by 2%, but with that, we we are not increasing it for 2014, 2015, we are keeping it the same. This was passed in November 2006 to support public safety. The secondary, as I mentioned, is to support the general obligation bond debt service payments that was levied for the, for the construction of Copper Sky and the regional park. The levy for secondary property tax is not restricted. It's only, it's for the outstanding debt service payments. The, the restriction that the state does is bonding capacity for the city, which means you can only issue so much bonds for the assessed value of the whole city. So there is a little difference between the, the restrictions of, the levy is not restricted to pay the debt service, but the state restricts how much bond debt the city can have. And this GO, the GO authorization was passed in November 2006 by the voters. So with that, the, the way the levy, kind of a brief overview of the levy calculation rate, the levy is set by the budget process. So what we do as a city, as we go through the budget process, is how much do we need for the operations? And it is set through, through that budget process. The net assessed valuation is determined by Pinell County Assessor's Office. And with that, you get the rate or the net assessed value, the levy of it. So kind of looking at it, the, the primary levy, as I mentioned, is neutral. The secondary increases for the debt service payments, and this is a, a last year compared to coming up fiscal year comparison of your, of the primary and secondary levies. As you notice, the secondary does go up from one point, or $1.76 to $2.73, but it should the following years go back down to about $1.76 to about $1, $1.80. The increase actually is less than comparable to fiscal year 12, 13, 13, 14. That was the increase of the secondary alone was $1.06. This increase is 61 cents. And the primary rate actually went down because of the assessed valuation was higher than the previous years. And as the calculation works is, if the assessed valuation goes up, your rate goes down, and then if your assessed value goes down, your rate's going to go up. So it's kind of inverse relationship there. So here's a brief calculation of what the, the levy calculation would be for primary and secondary. If you had a, a value of $100,000 home with 10 percent assessed ratio, total would be That was pretty brief and quick, but any questions from counsel on?
Questions, counsel? Any questions on this? Okay. With that, I think we can get, get to this, is, we will have a roll call, but before we, before we move to that motion, you know, I, I find this interesting in the, in the fact that, you know, it's, it's like an investment, and, and the reality is, is actually having this little, this little bump early on, kind of goes along with what previous councils have actually requested, and that is, is you pay less over time in the interest rate by having a little bit more upfront paid down on the principal. And so the reality is, is that you save more for the city over the law hall, i.e. the taxpayer, and, and therefore you do, you accomplish a couple of things. You, you, you reduce the outstanding debt, okay? You save the city and, and the taxpayer money, and it allows you to free up that, that bond capacity that still exists for the other things that, that the voters wanted in 2008, such as things like, you know, a main library. I mean, that's something that I just spoke with the Friends of the Library about, and they're very concerned about it. So, you know, past councils had, had said, and I'd heard in, in many of the budgetary meetings, that they'd like to see bond payments, you know, paying down these things faster if at all possible, so that you can free up those funds for other things later on. But I think it's also wise fiscal policy if you're going to be able to save the taxpayer, you know, ultimately millions of dollars in the long run by, by paying down that principal early on. Am I mistaken in any of those comments?
No, Mayor. Counsel, that is correct. We are looking in the long run of saving the city money by doing this upfront principal payment. But with also, you're correct with, the, the capacity calculation is based on the assessed value and the outstanding debt that the city has on general obligation bonds. There's a, a 20 percent and a 6 percent limit, and with that is, the quicker the outstanding debt goes away and the assessed values stay up or increase, the more capacity the, the city will have to be able to issue the debt.
Perfect. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Yes, Counsel McGessy.
You said the assessed value. Do you have any numbers as to, we all lost value in our homes in the last few years. Do you have any numbers as far as from last year to this year, the assessed value of property?
The total assessed value for the city last year was, I believe, about $197 million. This year, it is $207 million total assessed value for the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. With that, we need to move to a roll call, please.
Counselmember Kimball?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Counselmember Brown?
Yes.
Counselwoman McGessy?
Yes.
Counselmember Chappados?
Yes.
Counselmember Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brian. That takes us to the final item on tonight's agenda, item 10.4. The Mayor and City Council should discuss possibly take action to approve an amendment to the Organizational Performance Award approved on May 7th, 2013. This is miscellaneous 13-32. There is no direct fiscal impact to approve the requested amendment.
Not a question. Mayor? City Council, Richard Clor, your interim HR Director. The action before you tonight is to consider amending an action the council took on May the 7th of 2013 regarding a citywide organizational performance award. In effect, what that award did was it granted one additional day to every full-time employee who received a meet or exceeds standards on their performance appraisal for fiscal year 13, 14, and fiscal year 14, 15. The idea of that organizational performance award was actually brought forward by the FOP during their negotiations with the Police Department for their memorandum of understanding. The FOP was able to obtain that benefit, that, that award, that recognition in their MOU, and they requested that the city consider it citywide, which this council did and approved. Unfortunately, the wording between the MOU and the wording for the approval that council did, did not mesh as well as I think we could have back when it was presented to you. And so we're left with this situation where there is some room for interpretation that the city action may actually grant additional days off that were not intended by, by council during the presentation. We've consulted with the FOP. They're in full agreement that this thing is supposed to be the same for the MOU-covered employees and the city employees. And so they stand in support of this, and, and it seems like the most expeditious remedy to, to this situation is to amend the original citywide action to only include eligible full-time employees not covered by an MOU with the same or similar benefit. And that's the action before you tonight. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? Okay. I don't believe we have any questions. I think that just aligns these, these, the intent with the wording and, and kind of clears it up legally, so that's probably a good thing.
Exactly.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Mayor, move to approve agenda item 2, 10.4.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye.